I will call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for February 4th, 2019. So our first order of business is would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for all of you here this evening, actually watching us later on on YouTube, a few introductions. I am Lisa Whalen, I am the mayor, and to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, Mike Maliter, John Chumpelin, Shannon Bruce, and on the end we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Fausky, and we have our city clerk with us also, Chris Lindquist, and our director of administration Cassandra Tabor, and on my right we have our city administrator, Mike Barone, Brian Grimm, who is usually here, is absent this evening, and sitting in for him, no, not really.
Sitting in his chair.
Sitting in his seat. Now is our attorney Ron Beatty, and our community development director David Abel, and then next to him we have our public works director Gary Peters, and then Paul Falls, our chief of police. So again, welcome everybody. First order is approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve or are there any additions? I'm just going to be making a couple of minor special presentations under special presentations, just very short. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Bruce. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So special, I do want to do a special recognition this evening, and that's a call out and a kudos to our public works crew. I know with the frigid, frigid temperatures, they were very, very busy in the last several days, and they went over and above their call of duty so to speak. They did a fantastic job. I know there were a lot of issues, and it was not of their doing, it was because of the weather. So I'm going to ask Mike, maybe Mr. Barone, to jump in here, but they did a fantastic job.
You bet, Mayor. I'd like to recognize Gary Peters, who's our superintendent, and then read off the names of our public works employees who did a great job. Trevor Barrett, Mark Klein, Carter Osley, Mike Powick, Aaron Rassett, Nick Redkey, Jack Strauss, and Randy Storms. So as everybody knows, last week was, you know, 25 years in the waiting record cold. We had a five or six inch snowstorm before that, but you know, you're looking at Tuesday, the 29th of January through Thursday, the 31st of January with lows 25 below, 28 below, 23 below, high on Wednesday, 13 below. And so this caused a lot of havoc for our public works guys, and as the mayor mentioned, they kind of went over and above. You know, they've been called out at midnight and 1:00 in the morning, like today, tonight they were called out, or this morning they were called out at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 a.m. for plowing, dealing with lift stations that weren't operating because the power was out and the panels froze up. They were dealing with wells, they were dealing with the water tower slightly freezing up, which they rectified quite quickly. They had a lot of drifting with all the wind that was associated with the bad weather we had. There was a water main break and a leak, and they've worked that out with the neighbor because of the frigid temps, they weren't able to get to it until Friday of last week. They had a lift station force main break. Again, we had ice tonight, so these guys, I mean, Gary sent me a quick email this morning that says, "We're going home because we've been here since 1:00 in the morning." They all hopefully got some rest, but Gary came back for tonight, so in order to kind of do some of the items that's on the agenda tonight. But they've done a terrific job under some trying circumstances. Nobody wants to be out in this kind of cold and snow, but didn't seem to faze these guys. But so I just wanted to kind of chime in on what the mayor said and just recognize them for a job well done.
Yeah, good job. Thank you very much for your dedication and service to the city. Then real quick, this is coming up later on under a consent agenda, but I also want to just quick say congratulations to Chris Lindquist for the Minnesota clerks and finance officers, new position. That's, like I said, it's under our consent agenda, but just wanted to call that out. Congratulations, you will be the new president, so good for you. Thank you. So we don't have anybody signed up under persons to be heard, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. One is approve our work session meeting minutes from January 7th, 2019. B is approve our regular meeting minutes from January 7th, 2019. C is approve claims. D is accept Gary Vares' resignation from Parks Commission and appoint Sarah Hussein as Parks Commissioner. And E is approve continuation of community development block grant funding for Western Communities Action Network, or WECAN. And F is approve continuation of community development block grant, or CDBG, funding for senior community service in 2019. And G, as I stated, is approve support of Chris Lindquist in the 2019/20 president position with the MCFoA, or the Minnesota Clerk and Finance Officers Association. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda A through G?
I'd like to pull item A, please.
Okay, that would remain B through G. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortenson make that motion, and Mr. Chumpelin seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Bruce?
On the page four of the work session minutes, the fourth paragraph down, there's a quote.
What number is that? What page is that in the packet?
I said page four. On page four, the fourth paragraph down?
Page four overall in the packet?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Page four overall.
So I think it's page two of the minutes of the work session minutes, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's page four of the packet.
Four of the overall packet, yep.
Okay.
There's a quote there that says Bruce suggested using a general statement that the city would consider a project with a tool such as TIF. And I recall when I mentioned that, it wasn't a suggestion, it was a question, and I believe I said, "I'm wondering if we," so I'm wondering if we might be better off using a statement that the city would consider. So if you could listen to that audio back, and I believe just changing the word suggested to asked a question about, Bruce asked a question about.
I don't remember you asking a question. I do remember you saying, "We should word it to say we would consider," and that's what you had said, "We should word it saying we should consider a project," so that we wouldn't necessarily say.
I'd like the clerk to listen to the audio to see what I said, because I recall saying, "I'm wondering if we might be better off." It was a question, "I'm wondering if we should do this," not "we should do this." I wasn't suggesting it, and the reason I'm saying this is because I am opposed to using TIF. I've been on record opposing using TIF, and if someone were to read this, they could interpret it that I'm suggesting that we use TIF, which I never would do. So that's the reason I'd like the clerk to verify what the wording was, and if it indicates it was a question, change that to "I asked a question about it" rather than "I suggested using TIF." Does that make sense?
Madam Mayor, I can do that, and we can bring on the table a moment to bring it back at the next meeting, if that's what council wants.
Is that what the council would like? My, like I said, I'm not saying that you suggested we use it, but you said the wording should be "we consider using it." And then if you look at the minutes, so Mr. Beatty commented that every project should be reviewed on a project-by-project basis. That was part of the discussion. We also discussed whether we would have to consider it, and then again, Mr. Beatty answered with, you know, that if it's going to be a burden to the taxpayers, we would not have to consider it. And I recall that whole conversation regarding considering it. And then in the end, it says consensus of the council indicated that TIF would be the tool they would consider, again, the word "consider," and they also would be in support of any housing programs that the county funds and oversees. And I don't think we're going to change that last sentence. That says that there was general consensus that.
I'm not asking.
Let me finish, please. I understand. So I'm, I mean, the council wishes to take a look at this again, fine, but.
I would just like the clerk to verify what was said.
If the council would like to do that, that's up to the council.
I'm fine with that.
I am too.
Okay, bring it back.
And then also on page five, the third paragraph down where it says Bruce wanted to know the requirements for ag preserve and wants to make it easy for residents to get the ag preserve status. I never used the word "easy." I said that I would like, I thought that we should encourage residents that are eligible for ag preserve to pursue it. I never said I wanted to make it easy, and I think that was just a misinterpretation of what was said. But again, if you could go back, listen to the audio, and clarify that, and more accurately represent what I said, that would be appreciated.
That's in those same minutes.
That's all.
Yes, it's on the next page, I got it.
Okay, we'll bring those back. So next, we don't have any more public hearings. We will have two next time. And then we have business items. Our first business item is accept a quote and approve the contract for lift station cleaning. Mr. Peters, I think you're pretty much the whole.
I think I pretty much got all the business items tonight here. Madam Mayor, Council, thank you. The city has 19 owned sanitary lift stations in town, and they are in need of cleaning two times a year. This cleaning consists of pump down, complete wash, and of the entire wet well area. We do not have the equipment at the city to do this, so this is sent out for bidding. We do this on, we used to do this on a three-year contract along with our sanitary sewer line jetting, because that was done in a three-year cycle. With the expansion of the city, the sewer line jetting has now been turned into four sections of the cities, with one section being done every, every year in a four-year rotation. So we've opted to do a two-year for the sanitary lift cleaning in association with that. We did send out to seven different companies asking for quotes. We did receive three back from, from companies. We did actually receive a fourth. They were due on Friday at 3:30 on the 25th. We did receive one on Monday morning through email at 7:04, which we could not take because it had passed the deadline. So we did actually receive four to seven. Out of the one, the Overline &amp; Sun is our recommendation. They've been doing it for the past few years. Excellent contractor, as are the other ones that submitted quotes, but they've been our primary contractor. So the motion is to approve an agreement with Overline &amp; Sun for the cleaning, twice-a-year cleaning of 19 city-owned lift stations with a cost of $5,320 for 2019, and a cost of $5,662 for 2020, for a total contract of $10,982.
Thank you, Gary.
I have one question. Hydro Clean is really far over the other. Why is that?
And that was a good question. We did bring that, I discussed with Allison too, and I asked, when we sent the quotes out, I thought maybe I worded it wrong because the other company, which I will not name, sent theirs, and they were very high too. But being that they, Hydro Clean and the other company are more of a larger firm, we don't know if they do anything different, but I gave it to one, two of my guys to read, I gave it to Allison to read, the way we quoted it, and the way it was quoted, "We have 19 lift stations that need cleaning twice a year." It was written on the bid per lift station 19 times, or 19 lift stations per time, so basically times two. For some reason, they were so much higher, and so was the other company, where Ritter &amp; Ritter was right in line with Overline &amp; Sun. So unless they just charged that much more, I mean, we're talking a substantial, as you can see, it's a substantial amount, and same with the overall cleaning of the lines too were that much more, so. Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, I phrased it right, so I just wanted to make sure, you know, if we had to, you know, cancel this and redo it, but you know, Allison read it too, and it stated that way. So yeah, it was just really, the other one came back extremely high, I think that was 100 and, or 243,000 for theirs, to do it to your contract, so.
Is that the one that gold plates everything?
They must. You know, unless they're lowering a person down there and scrubbing it by hand, I don't know what the difference, because they do it all the same thing, but yeah, it's just that much more of a, I was shocked.
Yeah, that was weird, so.
Yeah, we'll take 10-9.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take the.
I like the fact that they've already done business, and you're pleased with that.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to accept the quote and approve the contract for the lift station cleaning, awarding it to Overline &amp; Sun in the amount of $10,982 for 2019 and 2010? 20, 20, 20. 2019 and 2020.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we have a quote and approve a contract for the sewer, sewer main cleaning.
Madam Mayor, Council, this is for the yearly cleaning of the sanitary sewer lines, the jetting of the lines. As I said before, we used to do it in three sections of the city. We've broken it down to four. We do have now a total of 178,000 lineal feet of sanitary sewer in town, which gone up considerably. So we break and broke it down into four sections of the city. One section will be cleaned per year. We are this year doing the, I apologize, I, the southwest and the north sewer areas. The southwest area is a total of just over 39,000 linear feet, with the north being just over 52,000 lineal feet. Again, they were sent to the same seven contractors. We received four back, one was late. So out of the three there, they're pretty close. Again, Overline &amp; Sun was just fairly cheaper. They've again been doing it for the last three contract year period. Before that, they also did all our televising of our sewer mains. So the motion is to approve an agreement with Overline &amp; Sun for the sanitary sewer line cleaning services for 2019 and 2020, with a yearly cost of $24,288 for 2019, and $68,028 for 2020, for a contract total of $92,291.77.
Yeah, there they were, a little, little closer.
Yes.
Any, any other questions?
So just to clarify, on the previous contract, there's quite, was that just lift station cleaning?
The previous one I just did was just for the lift stations.
How come there's so much linear feet listed in that, in those contracts? There's like 18,000 linear feet. It makes it sound like it's line cleaning as well.
Well, this, this second one is the sewer line cleaning.
Right, that part I get, but when we go back to the previous one, and I look at, you can take either, I'll take Overline, it's page 48 of the packet. Item number one is clean eight-inch sewer in right-of-way, and there's 18,986 feet listed at a price of 59 cents a foot. That, that's a little bit confused, just to.
I guess I don't have that, are you talking about the bid form itself?
Yeah.
The bid form was sent out as one unit to do both.
Oh.
If you go down, we have different sized sewer mains, and, and some of them are in the road right-of-way, and some are through easements. So easement cleaning for the sewer mains takes different equipment. They can't just take the big vac trucks into people's backyards, they have a smaller piece of equipment. The very bottom of the line, 13, is the vacuum and cleaning of the lift stations, per 19 of them, at the very bottom.
Okay.
That's the, that's the actual lift station itself. The rest of it is, above that is for the sewer. We sent out one bid to cover both things.
Okay, got it, okay, thanks. Okay, thank you.
So you can pick and choose basically, then, line item, whatever, because the 5662 comes up?
Yes, it's, it's, we break it down that way because I say, you know, the larger the diameter pipe, the more, the little more work it is, and then when you get into easements, you have to have a smaller piece of equipment to get into a lot of these backyards and stuff like that. You want to take a 70,000 pound truck into somebody's backyard, they're not going to like that.
Okay, good question. Yep. So the total would be 92,291.77, and that would be for contract year 2019 and 2020. Is there a motion then to approve the quote and, accept the quote and approve the contract for the sewer main cleaning, awarding it to Overline &amp; Sun in the amount totaling 92,291.77?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Maliter and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, we move on to the contract for the HVAC maintenance.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, this is, we sent out proposals. The city has a need for HVAC system service, you know, throughout the city. Here at City Hall, our Public Works Building, the water treatment plant, and our well houses, and they each have either furnaces or air conditioning that needs to be inspected yearly to make sure everything is working properly. Again, we do not do this in-house, do not have the expertise. Sent it out to three different contractors who have been in the past and are very competitive. Received two back this year with Sebold Heating and Cooling, who is the present contractor that has it for this year, awarding the contract to them for the two-year for, again, been excellent. I mean, they've responded very well. I mean, we just had them out, again, with this cold weather at the water treatment plant. We had our furnace quit working, it was a vent issue on top of the roof. They knew right away, they took care of it, and, you know, and then even in their busy schedule, they had stopped, and they're locals, so they're close, which is nice. The motion is to award a two-year contract with Sebold Heating and Cooling for the 2019 and 2020 spring and fall HVAC services here at City Hall, the Public Works Buildings, including the wells and treatment plants, for a contract price for two years of $7,960.
So Gary, in the case like where they stopped out, is that covered in here or is that built separately?
That is built separately. So what this covers is, it covers the spring turbine or air conditioning system, they'll come through and they'll wash all the coils out, they'll make sure the switching is good, that there's, the freon is up to par, everything's functioning properly along with the fans and the A coils downstairs, and then in the fall, they'll come through and they do the same thing with the heating units in all the buildings, go through the furnaces, make sure that the burners are clean, they do a complete cleaning and inspection to make sure that the CO is all compliant, everything's good and that. So I mean, this is just strictly for the inspection and tune-ups. Anything extra is billed at a separate rate. If there is a, a need for a furnace or an air conditioning, we will send out for bids.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve the contract for the HVAC maintenance agreement with Sebold Heating and Cooling for the following two years, 2019 and 2020, including spring and fall, for in the amount of $7,960.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And next, it's the accept the quote and approve contract for well number one replacement.
Madam Mayor, Council, we have an existing line shaft turbine pump at well one that is in need of replacement. This is a 1,000 gallon a minute pump, and it is our primary feeder into the north water treatment plant. It's developed a very serious vibration, and we're pretty sure that it's the connecting spider gears in the shaft system that are starting to fail. If, and also the windings in the motor itself are starting to give off a high-pitched squeal at times, which is not a good indicator either that they are starting to fail. With the spider gears, this is the connecting system of the shaft system that goes down to the actual pump. If those fail, they can separate, and we have a splash. Basically, the whole pump drops into the aquifer. It's a 125 horsepower motor, and it's, they're not cheap to replace. What we're looking, since this is the primary feed, it's a vertical turbine, which means the pump, the motor itself is up on top, and the pump is down below. We're asking to be, we got, we got pricing two different ways. One, to rebuild the motor and the pump, or to replace the complete unit with a submersible unit. We asked for this for two different reasons. We were recommending replacing the pump with a submersible. First off, they're quieter, they're easier to maintain, and they're by far more efficient. It can operate at higher speeds with less pump bowl assemblies. What that means is it has easier time sucking the water out of the aquifer up the piping that way. So we did send out for three quotes to three different companies. All these, we've used, we've used two of these in the past. Bergerson and Caswell was actually the original installer. They also have supplied the restructuring or the redoing of well houses five, three, and four in the past. One thing I did want to mention that, all our well houses are on a seven-to-eight-year rotating inspection program. What that means is with the Department of Health, we try to maintain a schedule. We'll take it offline, we do a complete pull and inspection of the pumps to make sure everything is working and in good condition, so we don't get a failure. This one was scheduled this year to have this work done, so, and it was originally installed in 1990, and it has been res serviced at least one time when they redid the well house in 2008, so it has not been done since then. So, but for being 1990, and it is now 2019, the city got their money's worth out of this pump and motor, so it's, it's been very well done. We did ask for three different companies, truck companies just kind of, they have done, they just did well six and seven for us for the new water treatment plant. They were the installers of the well and pumps there, so we've worked with them. Mineral Services Plus is also a contractor, it's been around for many, many years, another good contractor. They were actually Johnny on the spot. They were the first one, I've called four different companies. They were the first one to come out and take a look at it right away that same day, and kind of give us a heads up what was going on. So I was very impressed with their, with their service. With that said, the one company changed the size of the discharge pipe from a 10-inch to eight-inch. While you can do this with the treatment plant the way it is, reducing the volume of the piping would not be recommended. You know, it'll decrease the pump life, because it'll pump a little harder, and it'll also go and decrease some of the volume. While we can do that, it's feasible to do it, but we just feel that it would not be beneficial to downsize the draw pipe. It's a 10-inch, let's leave it there, you know, with the less fittings and stuff. So we are recommending to go with Mineral Service Plus out of Green Isle. They did come in with a quote of $46,986 to replace the, for a pump replacement. So motion to award a contract with Mineral Service Plus at a total contract price of $46,986 for a complete pump replacement at well one.
How long has it been, was the vibration, how long ago?
It's going on almost three weeks now. We're kind of waiting to get through this. Brian and I talked about this. We could have processed this through as a maintenance item, but being that it is almost $50,000, we figured probably better to come to you guys, let you know what's going on. We do have pump two, and this is why we kind of did this, well two A, which also feeds that, which we just did the new VFD for it, that is operational and it is servicing there. So if this does, we do have water up there, I mean, don't, I mean, that's not the issue. If we would have needed to shut it down, we could have run off well two A. But, and just kind of to be open with you guys and just, you know, that, you know, more transparent again, Brian and I decided probably a good idea to present this to you guys, being that it is almost $50,000.
I appreciate it. My concern was, obviously, there's no magic to know when it'll fail.
Correct, and we are, when we are watching it carefully, we do check it every day. Pump two, or well two A is in lead, so basically what that means is we're using that more than we are at one. One does have a better quality water, so we like to run that, but now with the way it's set up, we blend. We blend two A with one, same with down south, we went six and seven together to blend the water. It's, it's beneficial to do that, because now both pumps are running consistently, so, you know, it's, one's not just sitting idle while the other one does it, so.
Thank you, Gary.
Yep.
And this, this 46,000 is coming out of the water fund, is that correct?
Correct, that'll come out of the, out of the water fund, yes.
Did we have this, I'm trying to recall from our budgeting sessions, did we have this, I think you mentioned here we're going to inspect it this year, were we planning on replacing it this year?
We're, we're not expecting to replace it, we were going to inspect it, which means they'll pull everything out and then, you know, and then basically what happens in the inspection process, it gets taken offline, everything is removed, everything has gone through, and they do an evaluation of not only the shaft, the motor, the pump, most time it's. Uh, most time it's rebuilt because you've got it out, that's the bulk of it to redo it. But also the casings looked at, the, the well is reshocked and cleaned, uh, and reassembled. So it was due for that. And i- if you look at the CIP, we have it set up at a, you know, so it's, uh, well one and, you know, so it's through the, through the steps and then again down the line, it's, it's spaced out again for every seven to eight years. And this is a recommendation from the Department of Health, um, you know, just, just for this reason, so that we don't run into this and all of a sudden run into an issue where, hm, guess what, no water. So.
Okay. Is there a, um, a motion to accept the quote and approve the contract for, uh, well number one, uh, replacement, replacing the pump with Mineral Services Plus in the amount of $46,986?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So our next one is, um, approve the contract for the gen- generator maintenance. Again, Mr. Peters.
Madam Mayor, Council, sick of hearing my voice, I'm sure. This'll be our last one of the night for me. Uh, the city of Minatrista has a need for standby generators here at City Hall, uh, public safety, our Public Works Building as well as the water treatment plants. Um, these are, and we also have, um, three portable units that we, uh, pull behind units that will run lift stations and wells in time of need, which last weekend just happened to be, or last week we happened to need them again. Um, what this is entailing is a complete, uh, inspection twice a year. Um, there's a, what they call annual service and a bi-annual service. The annual service is a full maintenance inspection with oil change, filters changing. Um, uh, the only thing it does not include is a load test, which is, should be done every three to, three to five years. And we will probably looking at that, um, getting some pricing on that in the next contract. Um, that what, to, to check on the actual, is it producing the right amount of power that it is supposed to do? A 200,000, um, kilowatt generator, is it producing that at, on a, on a demand cycle? Um, it is not, uh, conceivable to do it every year. It's an expensive venture. It's about anywhere from, depending on our equipment, from about 300 to 500 a unit to do it every year. Um, in most cases, you'll know, um, the newer ones now all do have self diagnostics. So once it starts to go, it'll flash codes. So it's, you know, load bank testing, we can get by every three to five years. So, um, we did send this out to, um, four different contractors. Um, we did get three of them back. Um, the last several years, we have allied generators, um, had it, but this year, um, Advanced Power Systems out of Hopkins, Minnesota has come in, uh, with the low, uh, quote. Uh, again, another reputable company. Um, we've had no issues in the past with allied. Um, kind of checked a couple of places, um, a couple of references, a couple of, uh, other cities I know that use, uh, advanced. They've had no issues, uh, with them, so I'm confident that they'll do a fine job. They are, uh, another local company, which is nice. Um, so motion to award a two-year contract with Advanced Power Systems for 2019 and 2020 for spring and fall generator services for here at City Hall, our Public Works Building, uh, public safety, the two water treatment plants and our three towable units at a total contract price of $12,805. And just what I wanted to reiterate, and I forgot to mention this, on all our contracts, we do have a 30-day out clause with these people, so if something would go wrong with any of ours, that we do that. And Mike, I think, set this up, I, at least I noticed, since I've been here, it's always been on there, that we can, with a written notice, we can, you know, say, hey, we're, you know, switching. So if something goes wrong, you know, just because we're locked into a two or three-year contract, you know, we, there, there is the out clause, so. Don't let that, you know, so. But yeah, I definitely recommend, uh, you know, this for approval.
Um, so Gary, I just have a question. Uh, this is servicing and inspecting, uh, generators. If one of our public works people, if they were to attend a class or, or work, is this something that they could be trained on?
Um, you could. Uh, we don't have the electrical skill or the equipment to do it though. I mean, because basically when they come out, I mean, they're, they're, they're testing all the circuits. You know, they're, they're in there testing everything. I mean, they're, they're doing load testing on the batteries, which we could probably do that. But I mean, right now, we don't have the equipment. I mean, granted, we could train, I, you know, sense, so we, you're basically a, uh, almost a full-fledged mechanic, I mean, because these are diesel engines in here. So you're looking at, you know, almost being a diesel mechanic on one end and almost an electrician on the other to kind of monitor the electronic system in it. So we leave it up to the experts.
All right.
For, for the amount of money that it is, it, I don't think the city would benefit from having this done in-house. Leave it to, like I say, you know, there's certain things we can do and the rest of it we'll leave up to the other experts.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one real quick question. Under generator system services, they have a handwritten note that prices include batteries annually. Is that a big deal?
It can be. The, the batteries in these are, are expensive batteries. Uh, I, we, I do not know why they put that in there as, um, as an option or as a including because the, once the batteries are tested, we get a really good deal on our batteries through a state bid price anyways. So we would not probably, they probably couldn't beat our pricing anyways on batteries. You know, it's just like when buying vehicles or tires. I mean, we get such a good deal through a state pricing. But I'm not certain why they included that because we just replaced the batteries, I believe it was two years ago, I think, at, at, and, you know, they're, they don't need to be replaced every year.
Okay.
You know, I-
Is that one of those or is it just testing the batteries?
Nope. It, it says replacement. And I, I mean, uh, you know, I saw that written on there too and I was like, you know, amazed and, you know, yeah, includes ba- any batteries annually, because testing the battery will be done. That is included in it. So I mean, they will do a, you know, an amperage draw on it to make sure that the battery is at full capacity and stuff. But to put new batteries in every, every year, I just don't see a benefit from it, you know, especially for what we can buy a battery for.
So has that, that's been deducted then? Or was that for the-
It was included in their pricing, so I mean, it's-
It's for a different venue.
Yeah, the, the other company had put in there the load bank.
Right.
You know, the, uh, Advanced Power Systems put a load bank in there for City Hall and that, because, you know, why those two? Because they're older, I guess. You know, those are newer.
Oh, that could be, yeah.
You know, they just added it in there as a, as an add-on price, so. It was not asked for, but they put it on there.
Thank you. Okay. Um, any other questions? So, uh, we're looking, is there a motion then to accept the quote and approve the contract for the generator maintenance plan as presented? Um, awarding it to, I believe it's, um, allied, oh, Advanced, I'm sorry, Advanced Power Services in the amount of $12,805? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen, seconded by Mr. Molitor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next we have, uh, staff reports. Mr. Veroni?
Yes, Mayor. Um, just a couple of items to discuss. So two weeks from tonight is President's Day, or, uh, so we will not be meeting on that day. We will, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, February 19th. And then in lieu of our work session, we will have our strategic planning session that will run from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Uh, we ended up canceling last Tuesday's strategic planning session because of the very cold temperatures. Um, and then one other item to note, later this week, uh, was contacted a week or so ago by the Chief of Staff for Congressman Dean Phillips' office and the, his chief, his, his local Chief of Staff is spending time going to visit with, uh, staff members throughout their, his, uh, his congressional district. So we've, he's coming here on Thursday. I've got myself, Brian, and Cassandra meeting with him to just hear what we have to say about our needs. And I'm gonna talk long and hard about roads, so, um, so those are the two items I have for you tonight.
Okay. Mr. Abel?
Two quick things, Madam Mayor, Council. There will be a February 25th Planning Commission meeting, so if someone would like to follow up-
I'll be there, yeah.
Okay. And the only other update I have, uh, for you is regarding a recent conversation the council had when we talked about our comprehensive plan update and specifically, um, the ag preserve property that was brought up. I just wanted to let the council know that we do have, um, writ in writing from the owner that they do not, uh, request that their property be re-guided or rezoned. They, um, have done their homework, I guess, and, and determined that they do not want to go into that program. So I just wanted to inform you of that, so that, that will not be changed or submitted to the Metropolitan Council with, with the update. So just wanted to follow up on that. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Um, city engineer, anything?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to update the council with where we're at with discussions with, uh, Ram Contract Team with regards to the Halsted project. Uh, we met with a contractor early in January, uh, and needed some information from them with regards to some of the work that they did, um, on a time and materials basis. Um, they got that in, they had a week and a half, two weeks to get that information over to us. Um, and then we had someone on vacation for weeks, so, uh, we will be meeting on Wednesday to go through that. So I hope to have, um, some, uh, some progress made for the council, um, by the next meeting.
Okay. So we'll start with, uh, Ms. Bruce.
I attended the, um, Mount Fire Commission meeting last week with Mr. Veroni and, um, we went over the budget and the, the fire department is doing well, um, with the anticipated loss of Minnetonka Beach pulling out of the, the fire district or, or the, um, the group. Um, that, the loss of Minnetonka Beach has been mitigated a lot by grants that they've been getting in and doing a, a great job. Um, they've got about $72,000 of grants anticipated for 2019 and they just received a $13,000 grant to buy some high-tech extracting washer and dryer, a washing machine and dryer. Um, but they had had $10,000, I think, in the budget to do that, so a $13,000 grant is what they got. Um, and we were able to see it and, um, it, it's a, a washing machine that allows them to wash their, um, turn it, their gear.
Turnout care.
Every move carcinogens and all kinds of things that make firefighters sick and can cause cancer, so it's a-
Yeah, and the cancer rate amongst firefighters is like two in three times in the general population and this is the main reason.
Um, the, the other, we did, it was a long meeting, but the, the other notable thing is, um, they talked about the County Road 44 response plan, planned for south of Priest Bay Bridge. Um, and they have a, they have a Polaris ATV that they're driving. And when the duty officer gets a call, he goes to the bridge and meets the Polaris that has a crew of two on bo- onboard. And that's where they meet and they can get pretty much through anything with that thing. Um, and it's equipped with EMS equipment and fire extinguishers and things like that. And I also touched base with Shane Weber and, um, St. Bonnie just to see how things were going. And he didn't seem to have any concerns. He said things are going well. And that, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Trumperland?
Uh, January 17th, I attended Pioneer Sierra Creek. As usual, there's no discussion on any projects for Minatrista currently. Uh, two things coming up is one, they made us all aware they needed official notification of the appointments, I guess, for every year, which has been done. And, uh, also next month, they'll be electing the official, or the, the officers for the year. Already, Mr. Baker had already inferred that he would stay in place as the chairman. Uh, vice chair may change and treasurer for sure is gonna change as Mr.
Cook.
Cook from Greenfield is no longer.
Okay.
Is not back.
All right.
Uh, also on February 1st and 2nd, I attended the newly elected official seminar in Plymouth. I found it, uh, very, very well done, educational. I think from talking to others there that it may have been a more of a plus for me in that I had some background, having been appointed, and so I've sat and learned. And so a lot of what they talked about, uh, while there were nuances to it that kind of fleshed out things, a lot of it made sense to me. Um, and there were a lot of stuff I learned as well. But from talking to some others who were just elected and maybe haven't even sat on a meeting yet, a lot of it seemed to be going over their heads. And I know, I watched some of them at their tables and they were taking notes left and right. And that don't mean that I maybe should have been too, but a lot of it just was, I recognized what, what they were talking about. So it was a very good seminar, right? I would endorse it for anybody that's new to a council. And that was it.
Good. Glad you could go. Yeah. Mike?
Uh, I have my own case.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. WCC meeting, I attended on the 10th and it was hosted at the Harrison Bay Senior Living and Center. And there was some, uh, great, uh, events coming up that they announced. One of them, I'm sure Lisa's gonna go into, a night with community leaders on February 7th. Um, and then, uh, WCC, or I'm sorry, Weekend is gonna do an omelet breakfast on February 10th. Uh, $10 at the door and I don't know if I should leave these with somebody, but if you wanted to put them out there. Um, and then Painters Creek Winery, uh, they are doing a Valentine's dinner. Sounds very fun. Uh, seafood boil dinner, uh, 5 o'clock, 6:15 and 7 o'clock, it's $60 a couple or $70 at the door. And it sounds like a really fun event, so they have information on that. Uh, let's see. Um, I met with Amy Langenfeld and Cassandra Tabor at, regarding pig races. And we reviewed our notes from 2018. Uh, the cost of the pig races is the same as last year. And so we are in the process right now of, um, contacting, uh, our sponsors from last year to do it again. And good news, we already have our two gold, uh, sponsors signed up. Uh, the first one was Excel Cent, uh, Excel Energy, and so they got the naming rights to the racetrack. So it will be called Excel Energy Speedway. And then, uh, WSB also confirmed, uh, that they will be sponsoring as well with the gold bells. So, uh, that's very cool. And we got, oh, oh, we got a new thing. Uh, we are going to be doing in between races or before and after races, we are going to set up a little area that the parents can take pictures with the pig. So it's like a photo booth-like part. So just all kind of fun. Um, that's it.
Um, no meetings to report. Um, I will be participating in the, uh, WCC event on February 7th. And, um, one of the things I did want to share with the council, so, um, every once in a while I get some emails and, um, so then I say, well, um, I'll bring it to the council. So this email is from a gentleman, Mitch Thom- Thompson. Um, and he lives over on Bayside and his complaint is about his neighbor parking his fish house in his front yard the entire winter and parking it on the road for the entire summer. And he wants the city council to take a look at our parking ordinance. And without going into a lot of details, um, the question is, do we want to add this to our ordinance list to take a look at it? Uh, there may be some tweaks that we can do. I'm, I'm not sure that we can prevent people from parking their fish houses, um, in their front yards. But, um, there may be some other, um, aspects of our parking ordinance that we might want to take a look at. And we can look at his request and see if we want to do anything.
Could you share that request with council?
I will share that email with you and you can then decide if it's, or Mr. Beatty. Can I forward it to all the council members?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll just forward it and then we can decide at our next meeting.
Or, better yet, we're going to have our strategic, uh, planning session. I know we have some items to discuss under ordinances. We could certainly add it in there. But again, I don't think you want to, I don't know if you want to start voting on what should we look at, um, at the next meeting. But, you know, we can certainly bring it up and include it. There's a few others that we're looking, ordinance-wise, looking at.
Sure. Well, I can, um, include the, or I can forward the-
Throw it in the mix there.
Emails, uh, the email to you and then we can throw it in the mix and decide.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're gonna want to come, feedback from the council, but I think since our next meeting's gonna start with strategic planning and we are gonna talk about new ordinances.
Sure.
Review what we've done and kind of look forward. This is certainly could get added. I think I have some already on there. This could be good add to the mix.
All right. Um, and then the other thing too-
Uh, just one thing. When, when you forward that, could we get any applicable code, like we've got storage-
So you can see what it is?
Yeah.
Current code?
See how that falls. I'm aware of the, the, the location and question here. I'm aware of the, the, the location and question here. Um, and so I would like to know what rules we currently have that would apply.
Sure.
We've got something that we-
Okay.
Um, and I know he's been in contact with staff as well, and, but anyhow, um, it may mean a change, but I think we should look at it, or at least look at the, um, email and decide what we want to do. So, the other thing I want to mention is, so, we did, um, I know Public Works went out this fall, um, late fall, and did some clearing of dead trees and invasive species along Enchanted Lane. And I was thinking that, um, with that, it might be a good idea, maybe we can check with MCWD to see if there's any, um, uh, grants available for some buffering, because it's right next to a wetland. And then we could maybe enhance the area with a wetland buffer or some native vegetation that might look really nice and enhance the beauty of the area. Plus, it might give us also some, um, credits towards, um, phosphorus reduction or, or, um, you know, improving our water quality. I know we have to do some things in that regard. The other thing, and then we could look at our environmental fund if there's, um, match or something like that, but it's always, I think, a good idea, because now there's hardly any vegetation there, and so the runoff from the road goes right into the wetlands. So, maybe we want to kind of look at that at some point, too.
Um, if I may, I think, when this was brought up, I think Gary mentioned, part of the plan going forward was to, I don't say mow, but I'll just say mow, or keep, keep the vegetation down because of sightline issues.
Just some of it, right, yeah.
Right. I see him nodding his head over there. So, um, just kind of keep that in mind, that we probably, whatever we should, if we're going to do something that we need to be cognizant of-
Right.
Um, sightline issues.
Oh, absolutely. And I don't know how much, you know, you'd want, and that would be part of the discussion. I just thought I'd throw it out there just for thought. We don't have to do anything right now on it, but, uh, maybe if we think about it, at least the seed is sown, so to speak, and we can think about it, and if there's some opportunities, um, maybe we can take advantage of that. So, that's all I have.
If, if I may, just take a minute, I just want to say, Mike and Council, thank you for recognizing my public work staff. And, uh, should have said this before, you know, we met on Friday morning after, uh, everything that went on a week. I just kind of had a quick meeting to thank the guys, and, uh, you know, while it's nice to hear you guys recor- you know, thanking us for everything we do, the overwhelming response I got from my guys, that's our job. So, they don't, they didn't think nothing more of it than just doing their jobs, so.
Yeah.
But thank you for recognizing our, my staff and all their efforts.
And you. Thank you.
Uh, my guys, I'm going to give it to them. I just direct them, they, they get the work done.
All right. Thank you. So, with that, we are done with our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made the motion, and Mr. Molliter seconded. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes.